Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, July 12, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now 10:25 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. We do expect additional members to arrive momentarily. But we do have, as this is Tuesday, scheduled our Salute to the Flag and one presentation by Councilmember Zine. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Zine for the Salute to the Flag and then for your presentation. Please rise.
Mr. President. If you'll all please stand. Hand over your hearts, ready to begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Come on up here. Come on up. Hey, good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith, is going to join me since we're honoring people from the northern part of the San Fernando Valley that serve people of the San Fernando Valley. And joining me, representatives from Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International. And we're going to honor and recognize Tugnet. And people who want to know what Tugnet is, it's not a tugboat. Greg, come on over. Councilmember Greg Smith from Northridge, California. Tugnet stands for the Users Group Network, which is a PC computer club meets in the San Fernando Valley. Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International recently partnered to establish a community service project whose purpose is to recycle computers into the hands of community organizations and schools where children will directly benefit. Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International have established a technical team to refurbish used computers, in which Kiwanis Club is arranging the distribution. Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International to date have furnished free of charge 20 completed systems to Robert Frost Middle School in Granada Hills, 15 complete systems to West Valley Boys and Girls Club in Canoga Park, and are finishing up another 15 systems for Guadalupe Center in my district in Canoga Park. On Tuesday, June 21st, the Daily News published an article, "Seniors Help Kids Computer Future", of Tugnet and the Kiwanis praising them for their tireless efforts. And we have resolutions that we're going to present, me and my colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith. We have with us today Ron Smith. You can wave. Cousin Ron. Mary Radcliffe. Larry Nye. Come on over here, Larry. Get yourself on camera while you're taking those pictures. Roger Povny. Roger? Povny.
Good morning, everybody. 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 Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, July 12, 2005. Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, July 12, 2005. Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, July 12, 2005. Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, July 12, 2005. Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, July 12, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. 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 We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. 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 Colleagues, the time is now 10:25 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of Colleagues, the time is now 10:25 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of Colleagues, the time is now 10:25 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of Colleagues, the time is now 10:25 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of Colleagues, the time is now 10:25 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. a quorum. a quorum. a quorum. a quorum. We do expect additional members to arrive momentarily. But we do have, as this is Tuesday, scheduled our salute to the flag, and one presentation We do expect additional members to arrive momentarily. 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 by Councilmember Zine. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Zine for the salute to the flag, and then for your presentation. Please rise.
If you'll all please stand.
But we do have, as this is Tuesday, scheduled our salute to the flag, and one presentation But we do have, as this is Tuesday, scheduled our salute to the flag, and one presentation But we do have, as this is Tuesday, scheduled our salute to the flag, and one presentation But we do have, as this is Tuesday, scheduled our salute to the flag, and one presentation
Hand over your hearts, ready to begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Without objection, these items are before the Council today. by Councilmember Zine. by Councilmember Zine. by Councilmember Zine. by Councilmember Zine. We do have speaker cards on item number 20. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Zine for the salute to the Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Zine for the salute to the Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Zine for the salute to the Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Zine for the salute to the We'll call that special to hear from members of the public. flag, and then for your presentation. 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 Please rise. Please rise. Please rise.
If you'll all please stand.
Please rise.
If you'll all please stand. If you'll all please stand. Hand over your hearts, ready to begin. If you'll all please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Hand over your hearts, ready to begin. Hand over your hearts, ready to begin. Hand over your hearts, ready to begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Come on up here, come on up. Come on up here, come on up. Come on up here, come on up. Hey, good morning. Hey, good morning. Hey, good morning. Hey, good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith, going to join me, since we're honoring people My colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith, going to join me, since we're honoring people My colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith, going to join me, since we're honoring people My colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith, going to join me, since we're honoring people from the northern part of the San Fernando Valley, that serve, people of the San Fernando from the northern part of the San Fernando Valley, that serve, people of the San Fernando from the northern part of the San Fernando Valley, that serve, people of the San Fernando from the northern part of the San Fernando Valley, that serve, people of the San Fernando Valley. 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 And joining me, representatives from Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis And joining me, representatives from Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis And joining me, representatives from Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis And joining me, representatives from Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International. Club International. Club International. Club International. And we're going to honor and recognize Tugnet, and people want to know what Tugnet is, it's And we're going to honor and recognize Tugnet, and people want to know what Tugnet is, it's And we're going to honor and recognize Tugnet, and people want to know what Tugnet is, it's And we're going to honor and recognize Tugnet, and people want to know what Tugnet is, it's not a tugboat. not a tugboat. not a tugboat. not a tugboat. Greg, come on over. Greg, come on over. Greg, come on over. Greg, come on over. Councilmember Greg Smith, from Northridge, California. 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 Tugnet stands for the Users Group Network, which is a PC computer club, meets in the Tugnet stands for the Users Group Network, which is a PC computer club, meets in the Tugnet stands for the Users Group Network, which is a PC computer club, meets in the Tugnet stands for the Users Group Network, which is a PC computer club, meets in the San Fernando Valley. San Fernando Valley. San Fernando Valley. San Fernando Valley. Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International recently partnered Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International recently partnered Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International recently partnered Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International recently partnered to establish a community service project, whose purpose is to recycle computers into to establish a community service project, whose purpose is to recycle computers into to establish a community service project, whose purpose is to recycle computers into to establish a community service project, whose purpose is to recycle computers into the hands of community organizations and schools where children will directly benefit. the hands of community organizations and schools where children will directly benefit. the hands of community organizations and schools where children will directly benefit. the hands of community organizations and schools where children will directly benefit. Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of Kiwanis Club International have established a technical Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of Kiwanis Club International have established a technical Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of Kiwanis Club International have established a technical Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of Kiwanis Club International have established a technical team to refurbish used computers, in which Kiwanis Club is arranging the distribution. team to refurbish used computers, in which Kiwanis Club is arranging the distribution. team to refurbish used computers, in which Kiwanis Club is arranging the distribution. team to refurbish used computers, in which Kiwanis Club is arranging the distribution. Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International to date have furnished Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International to date have furnished Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International to date have furnished Tugnet and the Northridge Chapter of the Kiwanis Club International to date have furnished free of charge 20 completed systems to Robert Frost Middle School in Granada Hills, 15 free of charge 20 completed systems to Robert Frost Middle School in Granada Hills, 15 free of charge 20 completed systems to Robert Frost Middle School in Granada Hills, 15 free of charge 20 completed systems to Robert Frost Middle School in Granada Hills, 15 complete systems to West Valley Boys and Girls Club in Canoga Park, and are finishing complete systems to West Valley Boys and Girls Club in Canoga Park, and are finishing complete systems to West Valley Boys and Girls Club in Canoga Park, and are finishing complete systems to West Valley Boys and Girls Club in Canoga Park, and are finishing up another 15 systems for Guadalupe Center in my district in Canoga Park. up another 15 systems for Guadalupe Center in my district in Canoga Park. up another 15 systems for Guadalupe Center in my district in Canoga Park. up another 15 systems for Guadalupe Center in my district in Canoga Park. On Tuesday, June 21st, the Daily News published an article, "Seniors Help Kids Computer Future", On Tuesday, June 21st, the Daily News published an article, "Seniors Help Kids Computer Future", On Tuesday, June 21st, the Daily News published an article, "Seniors Help Kids Computer Future", On Tuesday, June 21st, the Daily News published an article, "Seniors Help Kids Computer Future", of Tugnet and the Kiwanis praising them for their tireless efforts. of Tugnet and the Kiwanis praising them for their tireless efforts. of Tugnet and the Kiwanis praising them for their tireless efforts. of Tugnet and the Kiwanis praising them for their tireless efforts. And we have resolutions that we're going to present, me and my colleague, Councilmember And we have resolutions that we're going to present, me and my colleague, Councilmember And we have resolutions that we're going to present, me and my colleague, Councilmember And we have resolutions that we're going to present, me and my colleague, Councilmember Greg Smith. Greg Smith. Greg Smith. Greg Smith. We have with us today Ron 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 Smith. You can wave. You can wave. You can wave. You can wave. Cousin Ron. Cousin Ron. Cousin Ron. Cousin Ron. Mary Radcliffe. Mary Radcliffe. Mary Radcliffe. Mary Radcliffe. Larry Nye. Larry Nye. Larry Nye. Larry Nye. Come on over here, Larry. 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 Get yourself on camera while you're taking those pictures. Get yourself on camera while you're taking those pictures. Get yourself on camera while you're taking those pictures. Get yourself on camera while you're taking those pictures. Roger Povny. Roger Povny. Roger Povny. Roger Povny. Roger? 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 Povny. 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 Alan Lehrer. Allen Lehrer. Allen Lehrer. Allen Lehrer. Michael Geison. Michael Geison. Michael Geison. Michael Geison. Sue Kennedy. Sue Kennedy. Sue Kennedy. Sue Kennedy. And Sharon Rosen. And Sharon Rosen. And Sharon Rosen. And Sharon Rosen. Come on on, come on down. 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 These are the folks that helped put this together, this program, that's helping the These are the folks that helped put this together, this program, that's helping the These are the folks that helped put this together, this program, that's helping the These are the folks that helped put this together, this program, that's helping the folks in my district, helping the folks in Councilmember Smith's district. folks in my district, helping the folks in Councilmember Smith's district. folks in my district, helping the folks in Councilmember Smith's district. folks in my district, helping the folks in Councilmember Smith's district. And we have the resolutions that have been signed by all of us, including our mayor, And we have the resolutions that have been signed by all of us, including our mayor, And we have the resolutions that have been signed by all of us, including our mayor, And we have the resolutions that have been signed by all of us, including our mayor, city attorney, et cetera. city attorney, et cetera. city attorney, et cetera. city attorney, et cetera. And we're going to give the microphone to Greg, and then we'll, what, you folks say And we're going to give the microphone to Greg, and then we'll, what, you folks say And we're going to give the microphone to Greg, and then we'll, what, you folks say And we're going to give the microphone to Greg, and then we'll, what, you folks say a few words? a few words? a few words? a few words? Since this is being broadcast live around the city of Los Angeles. Since this is being broadcast live around the city of Los Angeles. Since this is being broadcast live around the city of Los Angeles. Since this is being broadcast live around the city of Los Angeles.
I'm just trying to make us nervous. I'm just trying to make us nervous. I'm just trying to make us nervous. I'm just trying to make us nervous.
No, you're not going to be nervous, it's okay. No, you're not going to be nervous, it's okay. No, you're not going to be nervous, it's okay. No, you're not going to be nervous, it's okay. Well, hold your hand, 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 it's okay.
It's not Zine at 8. It's not Zine at 8. It's not Zine at 8. It's not Zine at 8.
Not at, it's Zine at 8 now. Not at, it's Zine at 8 now. Not at, it's Zine at 8 now. Not at, it's Zine at 8 now.
Zine at 8, this is not Zine, this is live. Zine at 8, this is not Zine, this is live. Zine at 8, this is not Zine, this is live. Zine at 8, this is not Zine, this is live. Well, I want to join with my colleague, Mr. Zine, in congratulating the Northridge Kiwanis Well, I want to join with my colleague, Mr. Zine, in congratulating the Northridge Kiwanis Well, I want to join with my colleague, Mr. Zine, in congratulating the Northridge Kiwanis Well, I want to join with my colleague, Mr. Zine, in congratulating the Northridge Kiwanis and Tugnet. and Tugnet. and Tugnet. and Tugnet. I was just notified, in fact, by the Northridge Kiwanis that one of their projects in the I was just notified, in fact, by the Northridge Kiwanis that one of their projects in the I was just notified, in fact, by the Northridge Kiwanis that one of their projects in the I was just notified, in fact, by the Northridge Kiwanis that one of their projects in the very near future will be 35 computers for our Police Activity PALS Program. very near future will be 35 computers for our Police Activity PALS Program. very near future will be 35 computers for our Police Activity PALS Program. very near future will be 35 computers for our Police Activity PALS Program. They'll be run out of the Park Parthenia area, which we're building right now. They'll be run out of the Park Parthenia area, which we're building right now. They'll be run out of the Park Parthenia area, which we're building right now. They'll be run out of the Park Parthenia area, which we're building right now. And so they, I just want to join Mr. Zine in thanking them, particularly for their And so they, I just want to join Mr. Zine in thanking them, particularly for their And so they, I just want to join Mr. Zine in thanking them, particularly for their And so they, I just want to join Mr. Zine in thanking them, particularly for their donation to Frost Junior High School in my district, and their future donation to the donation to Frost Junior High School in my district, and their future donation to the donation to Frost Junior High School in my district, and their future donation to the donation to Frost Junior High School in my district, and their future donation to the PALS Program running out of Devonshire Division, near Park Parthenia, which certainly needs PALS Program running out of Devonshire Division, near Park Parthenia, which certainly needs PALS Program running out of Devonshire Division, near Park Parthenia, which certainly needs PALS Program running out of Devonshire Division, near Park Parthenia, which certainly needs that assistance. that assistance. that assistance. that assistance. So, I'm glad to be here, and I've known these folks, some of these folks, for about 30 So, I'm glad to be here, and I've known these folks, some of these folks, for about 30 So, I'm glad to be here, and I've known these folks, some of these folks, for about 30 So, I'm glad to be here, and I've known these folks, some of these folks, for about 30 years. 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 And they're great community activists, great community supporters, and I really appreciate And they're great community activists, great community supporters, and I really appreciate And they're great community activists, great community supporters, and I really appreciate And they're great community activists, great community supporters, and I really appreciate everything they do, but this one's a really neat program, and thank you so much for what everything they do, but this one's a really neat program, and thank you so much for what everything they do, but this one's a really neat program, and thank you so much for what everything they do, but this one's a really neat program, and thank you so much for what you've done. you've done. you've done. you've done. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
That's why I thank you guys, it's been wonderful, thank you very much. Yeah. That's why I thank you guys, it's been wonderful, thank you very much. That's why I thank you guys, it's been wonderful, thank you very much. I just want to thank you guys, it's been wonderful, thank you very much. On behalf of the Northridge Kiwanis, we're just thrilled to partner with Tugnet. On behalf of the Northridge Kiwanis, we're just thrilled to partner with Tugnet. On behalf of the Northridge Kiwanis, we're just thrilled to partner with Tugnet. On behalf of the Northridge Kiwanis, we're just thrilled to partner with Tugnet. We were able to get CSUN, a lot of corporations to donate their used computers to us, and We were able to get CSUN, a lot of corporations to donate their used computers to us, and We were able to get CSUN, a lot of corporations to donate their used computers to us, and We were able to get CSUN, a lot of corporations to donate their used computers to us, and Tugnet came along and said, hey, we can fix these computers, we can make them work, Tugnet came along and said, hey, we can fix these computers, we can make them work, Tugnet came along and said, hey, we can fix these computers, we can make them work, Tugnet came along and said, hey, we can fix these computers, we can make them work, and we can give them to kids. 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 And it's been a wonderful program, and we can't, we can't do it enough. And it's been a wonderful program, and we can't, we can't do it enough. And it's been a wonderful program, and we can't, we can't do it enough. And it's been a wonderful program, and we can't, we can't do it enough. So, we're looking forward to doing another 35 for the kids at Parthenia, and we'll just So, we're looking forward to doing another 35 for the kids at Parthenia, and we'll just So, we're looking forward to doing another 35 for the kids at Parthenia, and we'll just So, we're looking forward to doing another 35 for the kids at Parthenia, and we'll just keep on going. keep on going. keep on going. keep on going. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to speak? 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 Go ahead, sure, absolutely. Go ahead, sure, absolutely. Go ahead, sure, absolutely. Go ahead, sure, absolutely.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. It's such an honor to be here in front of all you important L.A. people. It's such an honor to be here in front of all you important L.A. people. It's such an honor to be here in front of all you important L.A. people. It's such an honor to be here in front of all you important L.A. people. It's a great pleasure to be involved with this project, and if I may, I'd like to introduce It's a great pleasure to be involved with this project, and if I may, I'd like to introduce It's a great pleasure to be involved with this project, and if I may, I'd like to introduce It's a great pleasure to be involved with this project, and if I may, I'd like to introduce the others in the group, since I would be redundant in repeating everything. the others in the group, since I would be redundant in repeating everything. the others in the group, since I would be redundant in repeating everything. the others in the group, since I would be redundant in repeating everything. Mr. Roger Povny has really spearheaded this group, they want to see who you are, and Mr. Roger Povny has really spearheaded this group, they want to see who you are, and Mr. Roger Povny has really spearheaded this group, they want to see who you are, and Mr. Roger Povny has really spearheaded this group, they want to see who you are, and kept it going by arranging for people to help and get all the components needed. kept it going by arranging for people to help and get all the components needed. kept it going by arranging for people to help and get all the components needed. kept it going by arranging for people to help and get all the components needed. And we have some helpers here. 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 Larry Nye was a fellow Kiwanan and Tugnet member, so he was a liaison between the two Larry Nye was a fellow Kiwanan and Tugnet member, so he was a liaison between the two Larry Nye was a fellow Kiwanan and Tugnet member, so he was a liaison between the two Larry Nye was a fellow Kiwanan and Tugnet member, so he was a liaison between the two groups. 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 And then, two of those who helped put these computers together to donate are Mr. Alan And then, two of those who helped put these computers together to donate are Mr. Alan And then, two of those who helped put these computers together to donate are Mr. Alan And then, two of those who helped put these computers together to donate are Mr. Alan Lehrer and Mr. Michael Geison. 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 And we're so happy to all be here, and thank you very much. And we're so happy to all be here, and thank you very much. And we're so happy to all be here, and thank you very much. And we're so happy to all be here, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I know the Kiwanis do wonderful work, and I know you'll continue that effort. I know the Kiwanis do wonderful work, and I know you'll continue that effort. I know the Kiwanis do wonderful work, and I know you'll continue that effort. I know the Kiwanis do wonderful work, and I know you'll continue that effort. It's not only computers, but everything else that you do, helping people, not only in It's not only computers, but everything else that you do, helping people, not only in It's not only computers, but everything else that you do, helping people, not only in It's not only computers, but everything else that you do, helping people, not only in L.A., but around the world. 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 So, congratulations to you. So, congratulations to you. So, congratulations to you. So, congratulations to you. Mr. President, thank you very much. Mr. President, thank you very much. Mr. President, thank you very much. Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Colleagues, we're still at nine members present. 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 We, just so you know, do have one of the sergeants communicating to the Commerce Committee, We, just so you know, do have one of the sergeants communicating to the Commerce Committee, We, just so you know, do have one of the sergeants communicating to the Commerce Committee, We, just so you know, do have one of the sergeants communicating to the Commerce Committee, which was meeting, last we checked, upstairs. 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 They just finished now, so they'll be down momentarily, and will be underway. They just finished now, so they'll be down momentarily, and will be underway. They just finished now, so they'll be down momentarily, and will be underway. They just finished now, so they'll be down momentarily, and will be underway. Give us just a minute here. Give us just a minute here. Give us just a minute here. Give us just a minute here.
On matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And the council calls forward first Alexandra Deitig or Datig. Please come forward.
Good morning. Dear members of the council, what I'm about to present to you should not be a cover-up. For the record, my name is Alexandra Deitig and I have been an equestrian for 25 years. I'm here today representing myself, Adrian Grulow, along with employees and boarders of the Los Angeles Equestrian Center. They are not here with me because they have been retaliated against for writing letters to management and stable management without resolve, or are afraid of losing their jobs. I'm here today to tell you about a major public health hazard, lease violations, slumlike conditions, upkeep, and the poor management of the Los Angeles Equestrian Center. An establishment that once was a world-class equestrian center. Usually I would call my local government official to sort this matter. However, I do believe that what I have to say is of concern for other areas in Los Angeles. You may also remember some of the things that happened at the wildlife waste station. These things are happening at the Los Angeles Equestrian Center as we speak. I have brought along letters from Ms. Grulow that have been sent to various government officials by LAEC, by the LAEC border, who has boarded her horse at the center for 20 years, along with a copy of the 25-year lease agreement of the LA Equestrian Center which was renewed just recently in the month of May. Please note the February 4th letter addressed to the general manager of Recreation and Parks. Why the lease was renewed to the same lessee is something that I do not understand. I have personal knowledge of other parties who wanted to make a bid to the center and could not get any cooperation from Rex and Parks. The Los Angeles Equestrian Center houses 500-plus horses year-round and has between 200 to 700 horses and exhibitors coming through its facilities from around the country on most weekends. Let me show you that these items here. My horse has to wear this mask right here, and I have to wear these glasses right here, these glasses. At dusk or at dawn, if I want to take him out. The reason for this is a large area in the back of the center that is being used for the composting and processing of horse manure. Last winter, I noticed continuous dark brown streams of manure runoff flowing into our storm drains, polluting our precious LA River. This runoff is from 20-plus-foot mounds of composting manure that is sitting on approximately one acre on the south end of the property. In order for parasites, viruses, pathogens, bacteria, fly larvae, and eggs to compost, it must be 150 degrees in temperature. On page 38 of the lease, clause 1004.04, it states under prohibited acts that the concessionaire shall not permit overload of any floor. I have photographs that I brought with me today to show you the amount of manure that is on this property. According to some studies I have done, manure should be on at least a five-inch slab of concrete to prevent runoff, and it should be covered during rainfall. Any runoff should be collected and treated. It is common knowledge that the concessionaire, Mr. Tim Behunin, is running a fertilizer business out of the back of the center. I have written to Mr. Behunin requesting a meeting regarding various problematic issues on stable management, including death threats to a fellow boarder whose horse was threatened, and I received threats for trying to help this boarder. This boarder also tried to make a bid on the center. Manure is also being brought to the center from outside the premises. There is no clause in the lease that supports such an operation. In fact, it clearly states in the lease on page 20, in the lower section of the third paragraph, 7.01, that all manure is to be stored in manure compound dumpsters and removed from the premises three times a week. It also states on page 28, clause 7.13, that all permits and licenses must be obtained by the concessionaire. It further states on page 34 in clause 9.0101 that the Department of Water and Power has all water and mineral rights on both surface and subsurface. I am told that the pumping station for the water trucks that furnish no license plates is pumping water from a well, and the trucks that pour water on the dusty roads are pouring water on the dusty roads.
Let me ask you to conclude, please, because we do have other speakers coming.
I'm sorry?
We do have other speakers waiting.
Yes, yes, I will conclude. On page 42 and 43, clauses 10, 12.01 and 03, the city holds a $50,000 deposit bond with interest, that in the event of default, that we can use this money to take this manure and get it removed because nitrates are seeping into our groundwater. There are seven existing wells on that property owned by the Department of Water and Power that are being polluted now. There are dead trees, and there are people who are very worried about the welfare and health of their animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Candy Domares?
Just, Mr. President, just some members here, this, can I just ask a question? You wrote letters to public officials when?
Ms. Adrian Grulow wrote the letters. They're included in your packages. February the 4th.
February 4th, who, because I'm the councilor of the district and I have a general manager of the Parks Department, who else?
Borchik.
Who else?
Bill Lockyer.
Okay. Members, I'm concerned about this. I think the Equestrian Center does serve a great asset to our community, and I know we all are champion of recycling, whatever the material may be. Whatever the material may be, but we want to make sure it's safe. And this has just come to my attention now, and I am going to do what I can to get out there mid-afternoon today, and I will let you all know, because I know it's of concern, obviously, to Mr. Reyes, who's chair of our River Committee, and some of you. So thank you for bringing it to my attention today. I'm sorry you didn't write me on February 18th or whatever it is. Thank you, Mr.
I'll go with you.
Mr. Domares. Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers, and you council presidents. On Friday, Deputy Chief Bergman stated, he said that this council was probably the best council he's ever seen in 32 years. This council does have that potential. And today at Energy and Commerce, we saw that. Councilman Cardenas, Councilwoman Womanhan, you guys were fabulous. You allowed a process to take place. Mr. Rosenthal, thank you very much. We're looking forward to you being on that committee. It's all about the truth, it's all about integrity. The new mayor has asked for all of us to be part of integrity and a dream, and this council has the potential to go places that other councils dreamed about but weren't able to go because they couldn't come together to work as one unit. So I think we're in the right spot. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number seven, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay, before I take up item seven, let me just mention, colleagues, we do have representatives from the Sheriff's Department, LAPD, other agencies here on item 28, which is a closed-session briefing. So what I'd like to do is take up the items called special if they're items that we're going to be dispensing with relatively quickly. Anything that's going to cause for a lengthy discussion, let's hold it on the desk, and we can take those up after the briefing.
This might take 10, 15 minutes.
Okay, item seven, let's hold that on the desk then. Next item?
Item number eight, and that was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a very important piece of legislation to districts like mine and districts in South Los Angeles, because I think we're taking, finally, finally taking a step in the right direction to alleviate blight in communities caused by used-car lots, recycling centers, by adding them to the annual inspection program. Currently, the Department of Building and Safety conducts annual inspections of automobile repair garages, automobile dismantling facilities, and storage yards, and collects a fee from the business owners. If this amendment is approved today, we will be asking Building and Safety to identify the extra funds necessary to operate the program and to set up a fee structure system so that the city recovers the funds from these businesses. In Council District 9, as in my neighbors on the east and the west, there are many non-complying recycling centers and auto shops that do not enhance the community. I hope that by adding them to this annual inspection program, these businesses will finally be brought up to code and become good corporate neighbors. I have spoken with CAO Fujioka this morning, and I believe that we will be looking at the enterprise fund, and the department will be looking at it as well as on with the CAO to see if this can be the source of funding for this program. Each and every day, and I'm sure my colleagues on the left and right will agree, we get complaints from residents that many of these businesses are dirty, they're loud, they're disrespectful, they leave trash behind, and they do not respect the boundaries of their operating hours. And I think as long as these businesses have been allowed to operate under the radar, it's finally time that we, as a city, shine the light on their practices and demand respect for the communities that we represent, and I hope that all of you will vote affirmatively today and vote yes. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I rise to, one, give my full support to my colleague, Councilmember Perry. In many ways, she's scratching the surface. We are looking at some very key elements here in terms of operations. With colleagues in other cities, we understand that this is a state-mandated, state-controlled operation when it comes to recycling. But I want to continue working with my colleagues, Councilmember Perry, to take it another step, but I want to bring that in another form of another motion, that we talk about design guidelines, that we actually specify setbacks, we specify landscaping requirements, that we specify odor-controlled type of facilities, we talk about the blighting effect, and then the relationship between these recycling centers to liquor stores and to our grammar schools. What tends to happen, unfortunately, it's a sign of times of our society, but many of the homeless, many of the folks who are drug addicted, many of the folks who are mentally disabled, who are surviving on the streets, look at the recycling centers as a means to get by on a day-to-day basis. Unfortunately, certain communities take the brunt of the spillover effect. Shopping carts filled with debris and trash knocked over on the streets, our landscaping and our public right-of-ways are destroyed, and we have images that quite frankly wouldn't be allowed in other parts of town. So I support my colleague fully on this effort, but I think we need to take another level. I'll be working with her to talk about how we further implement controlling measures so that the inspectors have more items to go with, check the landscaping, check the issues of odor, check where they're parking. Do we have a lot of leftover shopping carts in that area, a lot of plastic bags where they carry their forties and their malt liquors in one bag, things of that nature that are really contaminating our communities? So thank you, Councilmember Perry, for bringing this to light, and we'd like to take it another step to deal with these quality-of-life issues. Thank you very much.
Ms. Grul?
Thank you, Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry. This problem exists in the valley, too. We have had some deplorable conditions. It was good intentions, I think, to have recycling centers, but similarly, in my district, we've had deplorable conditions. We have had crimes occur in those locations. We have had recycling occurring at all hours of the night and close and adjacent to some of our homes, residential areas. Many of the owners of the property or the markets themselves do not maintain them. It becomes a haven for dumping couches and other kinds of items because it's not well-maintained. And so I think, music to my ears, Mr. Reyes, in my district, particularly because they have been complaining. We've had several community meetings, and Building and Safety has said our hands have been tied a bit because we haven't had the kinds of control since it is by the state of California. But I think this is a great step in the right direction that you and Ms. Perry have taken, and we're, in fact, having another meeting this week with the state in our district to show them exactly what the problems are in those communities. So I think we believe recycling is great, but it should not come at the sacrifice of our neighborhoods. And so I think your idea, and we'll look forward to working with you and my staff to work with yours as well, to share with you some of the particular issues we've had in North Hollywood has been the biggest problem area for us, you're in San Fernando Valley. So I think this ordinance is long overdue. The idea is a great one, and it will allow for us to inspect those recycling centers and hold them accountable and ensure their compliance and the responsibility of the owners. So I think, colleagues, all of us probably have had this problem in our district at one and what time or another, and this is a great step in the right direction. And I want to just say a special thank you to my residents in my district who have been battling this for a very long time and have been thrilled with the movement of this ordinance and to make it happen. So thank you very much, Ms. Reyes, and Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. I just want to really thank my two colleagues for bringing this up. It's funny, because I was just meeting in my office this week with my neighborhood prosecutor to talk about some of the issues that were coming to my office surrounding the recycling centers, and it was, we were feeling frustrated that we did not have a lot of opportunities, we did not have a lot of controls over the way these looked, you know, some of the stuff that was happening. There's a lot of unintended consequences that happens from recycling centers. As Ms. Grul said, it's a good idea, and you certainly want an opportunity for people to be able to recycle and make some money, but they've really caused some negative impacts, particularly when they're located right in residential neighborhoods. So I just want to stand up and applaud you. You know, I don't want to put anybody out of business, but, you know, someday, it's almost, it would be an interesting idea to talk about our own Bureau of Sanitation operating recycling centers. So I'm in favor of this. I really applaud you for doing this. It's been a problem that we've really grappled with in my district and haven't found a good solution to. So thank you. I think this will make a difference in a number of areas.
Mr. Rosenthal?
I stand also to applaud my colleague on this issue, and I also agree with my colleague, Mr. Reyes, that we need to look at it even more intense than we have. I'm glad to be able to speak on it. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Just in closing, I want to make sure that it's very clear where we're proposing. One is, Councilmember Perry has taken the first step, the initial step, I think the most important one in terms of including it as part of the inspection of the inspectors. So that is what we'll be supporting today with your vote, hopefully. The second step I want to take, and working with Councilmember Perry and now my colleagues who have spoken up on this issue, to actually create design guidelines that talk about how physically they will be laid out, and that will be forthcoming in a future motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now, colleagues, let me repeat what I mentioned earlier. We're trying to get as quickly as possible to a closed-session briefing, which includes a number of our law enforcement and emergency preparedness personnel. We have a number of items called special. Those that can be dispensed quickly, we'll continue to take up. Those are going to take some time. Let's keep them on the desk and take them up after our closed-session briefing. So as we get to an item you may have called special, let us know which category it falls in. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item number 15 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks wants to wait on item 15. Next item?
Item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry? This is a quick one?
Okay, I wanted to, even though I'm in the ninth council district and this is on the, just one district over, this is a case that's been going on for far too many years. I wanted to go on record as supporting the conditions that's put forth by the Plum Committee. It is a, just an egregious, life-threatening situation to the people who are living not only in the building but in the area, and to the childcare center just next door. And this just needs to stop. And I'm assuming that the property owner will plead cost and that it's going to shut his business down and all that, but, you know, we have to be respectful and mindful of the people who are trying to raise families and trying to live a decent life in the area. And with the rate of crime emanating from the building, in and about the building, I just think it's about time. And I want to thank Mr. Reyes and the Plum Committee for upholding the conditions that's set forth and try to move forward on this. I have a case coming just behind it, just like it, and it won't be the last one. So let's move ahead on this.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 20 was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Let's hear, this is item 20. Ms. Labange, this is going to take a little while. Let's call forward Kristen Sabo on item 20.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Kristen Sabo. I'm a Parks volunteer. I spend 20 hours a week, on average, volunteering in city parks. I want to support this item number 20 because what the park rangers do is vitally important to parks, and that needs to be enumerated and understood very well before anybody goes forward with the consolidation. Keep in mind that in the budget process this year, 63 park ranger positions were transferred into the Department of General Services, which will become OPS if the consolidation goes forward. Note that the consolidation, the last time I saw a presentation on it, had 55 officers that were patrolling parks and all general services facilities currently. So you have a drop of 63 down to 55. And so what those jobs are that the park rangers currently do, and that are vitally important to parks patrons and volunteers like myself, need to be really well-understood, and the fact that these things will or will not be covered in the consolidation needs to be determined before anything happens with the consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Labange?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, this is an extremely important thing. Ms. Sabo, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Soder, and others in the community who've been very active in this area here. Thank our departments. Are there any representatives from the departments here on this issue? Who want to come up and speak at the front table? Members, we all support, and I believe it was unanimous, consolidation, but I think we unanimously all support our public parks and our park ranger program. You could sit here at the table, if you would. Mr. Newton's here. Give us an update on the status internally with this matter. And Mr. CAO is here. Good, thank you. The big ranger, the big ranger.
Currently, we're working with the CAO and the different unions to work out the issues, and also with the other departments, the convention center, the library department, Recreation and Parks, to work these issues out, and also working with the departments to address the issues that were currently mentioned by Ms. Sabo.
Tony, for the record, just identify yourself.
I'm Tony Royce, Assistant General Manager for Department of General Services.
Mr. Newton, you want to speak to?
Yes. Hello. Gary Newton, Department of General Services. I'd like to clarify a couple issues. One is that this consolidation will provide for more interpretive services within the Department of Recreation and Parks that are currently available, and it will also provide for more security services within parks that are, than are currently available. Currently, there are only 28 peace officer park rangers within the Department of Recreation and Parks, 12 non-peace officer park rangers, and a significant number of vacancies. With this consolidation, we will resolve that longstanding recruitment and retention problem, and we will be able to provide better security as well as interpretive services to the city of Los Angeles. Essentially, it's a win-win situation for the city.
I wanted to add a couple, excuse me, a couple of quick comments. A consolidation of this magnitude is a very complex initiative. And so what we committed is that as, once we complete the first phase of consolidation, and that's the consolidation itself, that through the following period, whether it be on a quarterly basis or a semi-annual, and I believe we have at least a quarterly basis, we'll be reporting back on the outcome of the consolidation. And I made a commitment to your office and in that committee that we would specifically address the impact on park security, and we would revisit the needs for park security. But what we ask, and I've said this before, is that we complete the consolidation first with the commitment that we'd come back through your committee, NAGE, with a report on how successful the consolidation was and the impact on various services.
I don't know if Mr. Muckrey was invited to this from Wrecked Parks, or if he's here or been called, but if someone could call his office, if you appreciate it. My concern, members, and I've been very big on the park ranger program, is we establish a process where there are regional park rangers. Some of us have larger parks, and just like we have senior lead officers, there should be a senior lead ranger, whether it's in Hanson Dam, which I know Mr. Padilla and Ms. Grul share, whether it's in Harbor City Park, whether it's in O'Melveny Park, whether it's in Griffin Park, Rodney County, et cetera. The CAO has made that commitment. My fear was that we were doing this, you know, emptying the cupboards without knowing how much you really need. But this, as you explained administratively, you have to have this consolidation and see how much is back. I think we need 37 rangers in the budget with the chief ranger and then regional rangers, et cetera, but we will work through that process. But some of the things have been identified that are real important, because this is transforming our rangers to be peace officers. Last night at Culver City Hall, Culver City City Hall, I was with the state ranger who handles Baldwin Hills Recreation, or he carries a firearm. Okay? Now, our rangers are no, are not going to carry firearms, but general services will be doing some of the role which is in the parks. We all know general services has no body that oversees them. So the police commission is a appointed body that oversees the police officers. So when there's unfortunate instances of deadly force or use of force, there's a review to make sure proper procedures are followed. You're going to develop that liaison to the police department, is that correct?
Yes.
To the police commission?
Yes, with, well, it'll be with the police department to review.
District attorney?
Of deadly force. We also, there's a recommendation.
Which we hope never happens.
Which we hope never happens. There's also a recommendation from Councilwoman Grul to develop a citizens oversight structure to also review some of the actions, activities in the combined security office and the GSD.
What, I mean, that's a real important question, Mr. CAO, on the oversight for the officers now who are security officers. Who's the, and I'm not pointing at anybody, but who's the oversight for the GSD security officer at the rear of council right now? If someone had to use deadly force?
It would be the department, the general manager, and any disciplinary action would be reviewed by our civil service commission.
Civil service commission, so is there some citizen body that's in there?
But what's being proposed now will take it to a much higher level. Because what's, as part of the memorandum of understanding we have with the police department, some actions, and Gary and Tony can help me, will then be taken to the department's board of review.
Right. Will the park ranger that exists still be able to write a parking ticket?
In the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Recreation and Parks and the Department of General Services, there is a provision that does allow existing park rangers or remaining park rangers to issue citations. Yes.
So they will be doing a lot of the, I don't want to say, basic services that they do? They won't be discouraged from doing something? Can they, will they be able to arrest somebody if they are, need to?
As written in the current memorandum of understanding, no, they will not be able to make physical arrests and transport.
But what do we do to create this? And I may have to call for more time, Mr. President. What do we do to create the park rangers, which I was involved in 17 years ago? How long has this class been a, how many years?
They've been peace officers since 1988.
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight, so that's 70, is that 17? Yeah, it is 17. That's pretty good, remembering that. We transform them from senior gardeners to rangers, and I want to make sure we don't lose that at the same time. I know some other people have pushed their button. I'm going to sit down for a while, but I may call it back to add a little more. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Labange, and colleagues. Here's what we're going to do here. We tried asking nicely a couple times, the items that we're going to be, leading to a lengthy discussion, be held until after the closed-session briefing. This one clearly is going to take longer. We have Ms. Grul, Ms. Han, and Mr. Reyes on the queue. So let's save the order. We'll take a pause on this item, take up item 20, our closed-session briefing, and then come back to this item and the other items remaining on the desk. Mr. Parks is off with item 7 and 15, our lengthier discussions. Ms. Zine tells me that item 26 and 27, which are related in subject matter, is going to take a little while, and I think a lot of people want to speak on 25, so.
And I would have actually a recommendation, hopefully, that maybe Mr. Labange would agree with as well. This, the item before us today is not actually the consolidation. The consolidation will be coming in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, to address some of the issues. I'd like to see them come, this item and that item. I'd like to see them come, this item and that, and come on the both, on the same day.
We'll get those clarifications and those amendments when we come back to this item after the closed session briefing, so.
Do you want to continue?
Without further ado, let's hold this on the desk. Proceed to item 28. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a closed session briefing. We do have various law enforcement agencies and emergency preparedness officials here on the item. Madam Kirk or Mr. City Attorney, anything before going into closed session?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957, in addition to the city representatives, the Sheriff's Department will also brief council on counterterrorism measures.
Okay. We don't have any public comment cards on item 28, so want to ask the public for your understanding and patience. We're going to enter into closed session on this item as allowed by California law. Sergeants, would you please go to the chambers? Welcome back into open session, members of the public, members of the council. We have dispensed with item 28. We now come back to Madam Kirk, which item?
Item number 20 is still on the desk, and it's before council.
Okay, item number 20, if we can have the city staff come back to the table. Would you have council members with questions on item 20? An item relative to the Park Rangers and the public safety function of the Department of Recreation and Parks. We do have a speaker queue. The next speaker is Ms. Gruel, followed by Ms. Hahn and Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Labange for a second time. But if our. Our department staff can come back forward. We're now joined by Mr. McCree, General Manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks.
We waited just for you, John.
Okay. And just to recap, the departments have had a chance to make their brief presentation. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of process questions and then content. Process questions, in the actual consolidation, we anticipate will be coming to public safety again within the next week or so is our anticipated, Mr. Rosendahl, sorry, we haven't talked about you yet, but this was an issue that was continued from the last meeting where Cindy chaired, and has been before that group, and we'll be able to brief you hopefully before then as well. But the idea is that it will come back to the committee within two weeks, and then come forward to council as well as subsequently, or probably in a parallel tracks, going back to the Police Commission, to address the issue of oversight, which has been an issue that Kristin, I think is still here, has been, and I appreciate Kristin, I'm going to say thank you again to you, as Mr. Labange did, has really been a great advocate and has brought some excellent ideas on how to continue to improve this process and evolution of the Office of Public Safety. And the concept is that currently, General Services, although has a Civil Service Commission, it does not have the kind of oversight that you do see in the Recreation and Parks Department, Library Department, some of the other departments.
And we definitely support the civilian oversight for this Office of Public Safety.
So we made a change or a recommendation in the last public safety meeting to actually come back with a plan, and again, I know staff has met and is looking at actually having representation from each of the departments, their commissioners, to serve on a Office of Public Safety Oversight Committee, again, which I think addresses some of those. Obviously, and this is not this process, colleagues, the intent of the creation of Office of Public Safety was actually to increase our response, be able to increase our ability to respond quickly to problems, greater training, et cetera, and coordination. I know we spoke on Thursday after the bombings in London with Alvin, and the coordination between all those departments, there actually had to be a phone call made to each security office, say, what are you doing? How are you responding? No universal training, and then, again, this will address part of that. At the same time, to address Mr. Labange's concerns, which is to, and Mr. Fujioka, to look at increasing the number of Park Rangers as well. And so we have tried in the last, now almost two years, we've been working on this to have this come to fruition, and we hope, and maybe some of the questions that Mr. Labange has or others may be appropriate as the actual consolidation implementation comes forward, where we address some of the issues of training and coordination, et cetera, that we anticipate coming back to this council within the next two to three weeks before the end of July in doing that. But colleagues, the intent again here is to have better services, more officers. And Mr. Fujioka, how many, the question has been raised on the number of Rangers, you know, that, could you just real quickly give us the numbers of current Rangers in Recreation and Parks that is going to GSD? Kind of the numbers, are you looking at GSD to answer that question?
Gary's going to help me with that, the specific numbers. What I committed to is that immediately following consolidation, and it was requested by your committee, well, actually you, that we would come back with a post-implementation report, first immediately, then on a quarterly basis, to see where we're at. That will include the impact on security services at our parks. And with that, I've told Councilman Labange, we would look at what resources we'll need to augment, if necessary, depending on what happens as a consequence of consolidation, Park Ranger services at the various parks. Because we know through the consolidation, I believe there'll be 17 Park Rangers initially. I think that's initial. And then after, but the consolidation may result in other Park Rangers not transitioning to GSD, but staying as Park Rangers.
So it could be greater than that 17?
It could be greater than that. But other numbers, Gary.
The current number of peace officer Park Rangers is 28. Non-peace officer Park Rangers is 12. And currently, there are seven peace officer Park Rangers who have decided to stay with the Department of Recreation and Parks rather than transition to General Services.
So 19, okay. And the other issue is, again, I know both in Mr. Garcetti's interest, as well as Mr. Labange, and probably others, as far as the regional parks and the expertise and the knowledge and the insurance that there is coverage there, that has also been something you've addressed in the consolidation, as far as special, kind of, lack of a better term, special forces for that area that have that expertise. Is that correct?
Certainly, and we will all work together. Although those transitioning Park Rangers may change uniforms, the expertise is not going to change. They will retain that expertise, and they will be responsible for training existing staff and new staff in park-related operations.
Thank you. For the moment, that's all I have to ask questions.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Gruel, those were a lot of my concerns. I'm a little nervous about this consolidation. While I know we all voted for it in the efforts of being more efficient and being more cost-effective, I have a real concern about the Park Ranger aspect of this. That's kind of always been my concern currently. I never felt like we had enough Park Rangers, particularly for our major regional parks. I have a large one in my district, Harbor Regional. We have enormous issues there, everything from a homeless encampment to problems in the water because people aren't educated about what they can and can't throw into the water, crime. What I'd like to see back in this report is, I'd like to go, you know, I'm sure it's too much to do park by park, but I'm, that's what I would like to see before, you know, I completely commit to this. You know, what does my Harbor Regional Park look like now? What's the coverage of Rangers? And what it's going to look like after this implementation? Because I'm not comfortable with us doing a post-implementation report on the impact, because, you know, it might be too late. You know, we might already have things that are so far gone at that point that it's going to take a lot to recover. So that doesn't make me feel all that great that we're going to wait till this happens, and then, a year later, let's do a report and see what impact it had, you know? That, I don't feel good about that.
One, it won't be a year. But first and foremost, we have developed several very comprehensive reports that speaks to.
Park by park?
This whole issue.
Ranger by ranger?
I don't know about ranger by ranger.
I want ranger by ranger.
What's real important is that everyone has characterized this. In the beginning, we talked about this as a cost-savings measure, but we were very careful in saying, this is, the focus is not on saving costs. The focus was on maximizing.
Right, and I have yet to, I mean, I know we're saying it will provide better security. I'm not convinced of that, so.
What it will in absolute terms is because we'll be utilizing existing resources more effectively, it'll result in more staff hours in terms of security at our parks and at our libraries and other facilities. That is an absolute, because right now, when you have a person at a library, then a person at a park, and maybe even GSD driving by, we're not effectively using those three resources for that particular facility. Through an organized and centrally structured plan, we will be using those resources much more effectively. But what we promised, there was a commitment, because right now, we have the study. We put a study together that says, here's how we will do it, and here's the impact. What we committed is that, like in any good initiative, when you, any efficiency move, you need to evaluate the effectiveness. You just can't implement. And that's what we're saying, is we'll come back and tell you how it, how successful it was.
Well, yeah, but was there, is there been analysis on the front end of, let's just say Harbor, let's take Harbor Regional, for example? Do we think we need more of the peace officer type of Ranger? Or do you think the interpretive one is what, you know, what's broken at that park and what will fix it? And have we had that analysis before we know whether or not we're going to end up with more of the peace officer type or more of the interpretive type?
Okay.
And I don't want my Rangers going to the library.
I want to have these gentlemen comment on that. The bottom line, we knew from the onset, we do not have, let me put it this way, additional resources are needed at all of our facilities to increase the security and safety for everyone. We know that. We also know that, that under the current structure, prior to consolidation, how this city utilized existing resources was very poor. We know through this consolidation, we'll maximize how we use those existing resources. But the bottom line is, yes, whether it's GSD officers, or Park Rangers, or security officers, or whatever, we need more for the whole city. But because we don't have the funds right now.
Have we made that study of each particular park, for instance, to know what the problems are? Because I don't think your post-implementation study is going to show anything unless we know going in.
Understand.
What it is that right currently is broken that we're trying to fix.
Do you guys want to jump in?
I think one of the key issues is that there are 400 parks within the City of Los Angeles, and the current Park Ranger deployment scheme is such that Park Rangers are deployed in a manner to respond from park to park to park, and not necessarily assigned to one particular facility. What we've studied is how we can provide more services, more GSD services, in our parks, and our conceptual model shows that upon implementation, we will be able to provide a 10% increase citywide, as far as patrol services, and at full staffing, up to a 90% increase in patrol services citywide. But we have not looked at specifically park by park by park.
Patrol, meaning, how do you define patrol?
Resources available in a specific geographical area to respond to calls for service or engage in proactive activity.
So crime-related.
Correct.
But see, for instance, I, again, in Harbor Regional, I think we have a real unique situation there, where, you know, the Park Rangers, you know, are, you know, I like to see them there all the time, because I think this idea of responding to a call is not, you know, what I'm talking about, long-term health of that park and that lake. And I think the Park Rangers, in their limited capacity, get that, understand that, and, you know, being there can respond before the crime is committed. And their presence there, I think, prevents criminal activity from happening in many areas, from, again, throwing the wrong thing into the lake, causing, you know, us to spend millions of dollars trying to correct a polluted lake, to a homeless encampment. So, you know, I don't feel as good, and if your post-implementation study shows that we were able to respond when somebody called for service, some crime in progress, you know, that's not my view of what I think Park Rangers can and should be doing in all of our parks. It's a different, it's a different response.
Understand. In isolation, yes, additional resources are needed for this particular service, whether it's Park Rangers I mentioned, or GSD, or security officers. But in the context of the city's overall budget, a decision was made because, you know, to fund other priorities. That's what happened. Instead, what we looked at through this initiative is to maximize the use of existing resources. And when you can get a 90% increase in patrol services and a security response, that's very, very significant. But when we looked at, when you look at the entire budget, we know we have competing priorities, and those priorities are driving how we spend the city's money.
I know.
This one, we said, we'll look at a better utilization of what we have right now before we add additional resources. But yet, we still committed to look at it, to see, to see the impact, to see if, in fact, we get that 90% increase.
But again, I think the questions you ask, and I know I'm over, I realize that, I think the questions you ask in your post-implementation study may not be telling you what I'm feeling concerned about right now. And that's lack of Park Ranger visibility when this is all said and done.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Zine, Mr. Labange for a second time, and Ms. Gruel for a second time.
Thank you, Council President. One is, I'm going to echo some of the thoughts of my colleague, Councilman Berhan. In my case, the parts that I'm dealing with, quite frankly, and I understand the intent of this, and it's to do something better than what we have today. That I appreciate. But the harsh, the harshness of the environments in our parks now are so real. In my case, I have a great program at Cypress Park, but while we have great programs, kids playing basketball, kids playing what they do on baseball and soccer, I literally have a young person getting jumped in by a gang simultaneously. They're beating him up, he's standing up, he's taking his beatings to be part of that gang. And it's surreal. This is happening right at the side of the building, of the rec center, while all these other things are happening in the park simultaneously. So what I'm saying is not to demonize the youth, it's what is happening in the parks in my district. Lincoln Heights, the same thing. I have a caterer of gang members that hang out right where the kids are supposed to be playing. They're flashing their gang signs, they're drinking their drink, very loud, intimidating. You will flash a gun while kids are trying to play in the basketball courts, while parents are staying away. This is happening at the same time. Now, you call a Park Ranger, they will come, they will drive around in the vehicle, then they'll take off because they have another call somewhere else. It speaks to the 400 parks and the very few individuals we have in that uniform. Call the police, they won't come for maybe five, 10, 15 minutes, because we only have so many patrol cars in that area. These are very real environments that we're dealing with. So when I'm talking and looking at this issue, I'm rather exasperated, because I know we have only so much on the plate to offer, we have only so many positions that we can fund, yet this is happening at this moment in our parks as we speak. So my concern is, where are, where's the violence occurring, and the level of incidents being reported in our city? And how often do we have a Park Ranger, even in the vicinity, or even responding to this situation? We should, we should understand that, because I know people are making the calls. It's gone to the. It's gone to the point where the park employees are, they themselves frustrated, and it's almost like a given, yeah, that happens in that park, and that's just the way it is, we're sorry, too bad. And that has to change. It's gone so bad, the, our employees have been, have been beaned down so much, that there's a resignation and an attitude there, that this is what happens here because it's the nature of that neighborhood. That has to change. But how do we change it if we don't have enough personnel there? And that truly becomes a question, I think, before us as a body. In working with Councilman Gruehl, I suggested, let's look at how we expand the official individuals who are in uniform and get a volunteer group. Get folks who can have an extension of, of what we have in the LAPD, which are the reserves. We can have family members, we can have folks who are involved or concerned for their kids to play reserve role through proper training, an extension maybe of the park rangers, whatever security systems we're, we're augmenting here, to have more personnel there. Just the presence of uniform might be a deterrent. So I believe we need to get to that level of work, but let's understand what we have right now, and that picture is very bleak. But at least we should understand what's happening in Cypress Park, in Lincoln Heights, in Lincoln Park. We're pumping all this Prop K money, and the kids and families can't use it because of the presence of gangs and the stuff they do in the parks. So that's what I'm asking you, if we can have that, at least that profile, that characterization of what's happening in our parks now, for those reality checks. Otherwise, this becomes just another exercise of adding maybe two or three, four or five individuals and not making a difference for the people that live in those places. And I'll stop here. Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Councilman Reyes, I have seen your frustration. I remember when the rangers came to me and wanted to be armed, and you have a ranger in a park confronting gang members that have guns, and the rangers want to go home at night. And I supported the rangers being armed. When I look at the consolidation aspect, I look at being more efficient, more effective, taking care of the parks that Councilman Reyes is talking about. We had a park in my district that had similar problems, and the police department put a lot of effort and cleaned it out. And it can be done, but it takes a lot of effort, a lot of resources to make it happen. There was a program that was implemented, and I don't know how successful, teaming up LAPD with the rangers. Did that program ever come to fruition, or was it just a concept?
Are you speaking of the Safe Parks Program?
Yes.
That, that program was put into place in the late 80s, early 90s, and continues today.
So they actually have LAPD working alongside rangers?
It, it's a program where 71 problem parks were identified, and LAPD, as well as the park rangers, provide special patrol services and enhanced patrol services to those 71 parks. I can't speak to what's occurred with that program in the last two or three years, but prior to that time, the program was up and running.
And the concern I have is that if we look at those 71 parks, we still have many problems there, that they haven't become safe parks, as the concept dictates. One more issue that I want to discuss regarding the consolidation, there are security officers that are at the police academy at Parker Center, not the contract, but they're city security officers. Are they part of this process? And if they're not part of this process, why not?
At this juncture, they're not part of the process. It's, this is not the first step. I mean, the only step, this is only the first step. In a subsequent phase, it's hoped that we can now, we can then bring in the security officers with LAPD. There was an issue presented by the chief of our department regarding having non-departmental staff securing LAPD facilities, but we are definitely going to address this. This is, this is not the, what we're proposing today is not the panacea for our problems at the park. It represents a significant improvement, it represents a step forward. And as we, as we go forward this year, especially as we start talking about the budget for six, seven, and we look at all of our, all of our priorities, this will be addressed. This is part of the public, our public safety program. The focus, of course, is on police-
Well, I find that, I find that-
And fire, but this is also public safety.
I find that interesting when they have contract security officers at police facilities. Not general services, not LA City employees, but contract. And if they're concerned about security, I think they'd be better served by having general services security than some contract security officer from some contract with the city of Los Angeles.
We share your concerns, we share your sentiments. That would be the next phase of this effort. Because it, we're still one city, it's still city staff, so-
Well, I understand.
We'll be going in that direction.
But when you have contract security versus security provided by civil service employees, to me, there's a big distinction there as far as the background check and the effectiveness that they have protecting that particular facility or the personnel that they're protecting. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Government efficiency, so important. Public safety, so important. What I've talked about is, it's kind of evolved a lot of this issue here, is making sure that there's someone who's responsible for the public place, so those who send their children or those who come to the public park can expect a, a good experience. And I think right now, if I went out to Lincoln Park at four this afternoon, there would be nobody there, because the people who were at Lincoln Park started seven in the morning, and they go. But I envisioned that we would have a permanent ranger there, or a permanent GSD, or a senior lead ranger, or a senior lead somebody at Lincoln Park. Lincoln Park is what, 20 acres? That's a big neighborhood park. MacArthur Park, 56, I think? Am my memory's off on that? There should be somebody there. If you put a building on a, on a public park, all of a sudden, you got staffing for five recreation people and five maintenance people. If you have no building, you have no staffing. And the whole issue that I have is to make sure there's somebody there, but not, as Ms. Hahn described, get, doing what, they get into the routine, because everybody's so busy, Tony. Everybody's so busy, Gary, that they get into the routine and just driving by and going from call to call. A lot of this motivation came from when Griffith Park Rangers, I don't want to say pursued, pursued someone into North Hat Water, and they got hit with gunfire. And I think heavy gunfire, no one was hit, but they got hit by gunfire. And what are our rangers doing? Why shouldn't they be protected? What is their protocols? I just, my, my concern, and I'm still, I support this concept of consolidation, and when I look at the CAO, sometimes I wonder if the CAO would rather see this under the police department in a lower grade than a police officer or whatever. I don't know. I'm, I'm, because I see, you see this as evolving. Because I know the previous chief, chief of police had a one-city, one-department-type concept, you know, that was kind of going there. I represent the zoo. There's going to be a change in security at the zoo. Each of our libraries are going to have a change on this here. But more importantly, the keeper of the public lands, are you going to have enough people to maintain what you have to maintain from public safety? Are they going to be in a role that we really want to have? That they're established, that they're like a senior lead officer, but a senior lead ranger or a senior lead GSD person?
John McCrory, General Manager, Wreckin' Parks. I think Councilman Reyes eloquently stated the stresses that are out in our large urban parks. It's real, it's every day. Currently, Wreckin' Parks has 58 ranger positions. Roughly 20 of them are unfilled, and they have been for the last year and a half, as we're waiting for this consolidation. Each agency that has a public safety responsibility, other than LAPD, cannot do the job they currently have with the resources allocated to them. The consolidation is going to bring together all these cats and dogs, so to speak, to provide more, in our urban parks, more of a police presence on a routine basis, and there will be patrol cars. They will be visible. It would be my hope that, much as we do with our police officers in neighborhoods, that the community gets to know these individuals. We work with neighborhood councils, and this goes back to what Councilman Reyes was asking. Yes, we keep statistics of all the crime in all the parks, when they occur and how they occur. We provide that to LAPD. We are, what was not stated in here is the other actions we are taking to make our parks safe. We are looking more for lighting at night. We are putting remote cameras in a lot of our parks. These cameras are hard-wired in by video monitors into LAPD. This is the next logical step for these urban parks. We have my employees, and Councilman Reyes again articulated, that are robbed, that are beaten, that are intimidated. It is my hope that as we have this, more patrols going from libraries to other public buildings through our parks, that these members, gang members, will know that there is a response there. They don't see that today, because we have 38 rangers for 400 parks. Clearly not enough. It's ludicrous to think that we can even get one-half, 1%. I think this will attack the urban park issue. However, we have large regional parks, and Janice Hahn said it best. There's a whole different stress to the large regional parks. We have equestrians that ride in back trails that, if they fall off the horse, do we want to crown Victoria to respond to them? No. We're, we need a ranger in a vehicle that knows how to get there. We have fires in the parks. We have lakes that have stresses with the runoff. We have to bifurcate these two issues. That's why we have been working with the CAO and, and your committee and others, after the consolidation, what should the complexion and the numbers of park rangers be to attack the issue in the regional parks? And we've come up to a number of 31. It looks like-
I added six to it, from my calculation.
Well, we were, we were looking at the overall budget for the city and-
Right.
And working with the CAO, trying to figure out, you know, I would ask for 50 if, if I thought I could get it. But I think realistically, 37 will provide one ranger at every regional park. I would post that person's name, the community would know it, I work with the neighborhood councils-
Right, that's it.
They have ad hoc committees.
This is what I want to hear about this consolidation before we go all the way on through it, that this is going to happen. But I know, Mr. CAO, Mr. Fujioka, you commit to this, that we would do that, but after, you feel, from an administrator, you got to go through the consolidation and have it shake out. There's a little bit of philosophy. Some of the community feel you should have all your ducks in order before you do the consolidation. I think that's one of the challenges. I'm, I'm betting on the fact that as the CAO, you understand this big picture, and this consolidation is going to shake it out. I just want to call these things out.
And I want us to make sure we, we look at the big picture, and so that, with the consolidation, I think the basic choice is, we go forward with it or we do not. If we do not, we still have insufficient resources that are being used poorly. If we go forward with it, we have insufficient resources that are being used better.
They're not being used better.
We're maximizing what we have right now. We will revisit the park ranger issue. I would like to do that in the context of the overall budget, and if, in fact, I think collectively, we made a commitment for any large initiative, such as adding-
Yank Chow.
How many? 15, 17 new park rangers? To do so in the context of the overall budget, because then we can look at everything as a whole and look at competing priorities. We know we have some challenges that are coming up, because right now, if we added 17 park rangers today, and in the end, we may, that may be the vote of this council, but it will come straight from our reserve. We need to be careful with that right now, at this point in time. But there is a promise-
But at the same time, see, this is what I feel, you're taking my clothes without leaving me any pants. That's what I want to make sure, to be very graphic on that.
Mr. Labange, let me, uh-
Yes, you missed something.
I, I-
You missed-
Now, now-
I know, I want to be very graphic in that statement.
Mr. Labange, for an open session.
I have a picture burned in my brain that-
I have Ms. Gruehl for a second time, Mr. Reyes for a second time, and colleagues, as Ms. Gruehl is about to remind us, we're not doing consolidations today, we're not finalizing Officer Public Safety today. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. That is right. We are not, we, we do not have the consolidation, however, it will be coming to council. And I think all of you have heard some of the questions and issues that are not new to us today, but are, are ones that all of my colleagues have concerns about. One point I want to make clear, colleagues, we are going to have the same number of officers and rangers we have today. This is not an increase. I want an increase. I want to see that we have more rangers, I want to see that we have more officers in the Office of Public Safety. But what we need to understand is, we all have interest in our district about how we want to preserve our neighborhoods and how we want to ensure our parks are safe. But what we're trying to do, and I think what you've heard from each of these department heads, including the CAO, General Services, and Recreation and Parks, is that we are going to try, and the effort, and we believe very strongly, that we are going to be able to serve these parks better, and some of our other facilities better, with the existing number of officers we have. Of course, we can do more if we had more officers, and we plan, and Mr. Labange has led that effort, and Mr. Reyes, and talking about the reserve, which we talked in committee recently. But I always, and Mr. Labange's talking about being graphic. I take a park in my district, at Witsett and Van Owen, in a challenged neighborhood. There is a library on that park, and there is a soccer field and baseball fields and, and center there. We have two separate officers going to those locations, one for library and one for the rangers. That doesn't make sense to me. That doesn't make sense that we're serving more people in that way, we're duplicating efforts. We also had a problem in Mr. Padilla's district, I remember, at Hanson Dam, where there was a, a rape or a potential rape that was going to occur. Rangers had to come from all over the city to get there. Wouldn't it be great if we actually had officers that were supporting them, that were close by, that were going and looking at the, the current library, and to be able to respond to Mr. Reyes's concerns, that, and the staff would feel there was a, a force behind them in addition to Los Angeles Police Department that was going to be able to serve them? That's the intent of what we're trying to do here today. In addition, we addressed the concerns of the, many of the communities, in making sure that those officers, those rangers that have the expertise, who have been patrolling in Ms., Ms. Hahn's area, or have been in Mr. Labange's area, Mr. Reyes's, they're not going to be moved to a new location. They're going to stay in that location, and to be able to serve the same community they've been serving previously, and to be able to be there. Secondly, when those officers leave, whether they promote, they go to another department, whatever is going to happen, we're now going to have a set of officers that are trained to understand park issues and library issues and general services issues, and are going to be able to have better training than we have today, and consistent training that we have today, and doesn't exist. And so I think we have to go back to, and I know that all of you sitting here, and I will be, I'll finish in just a moment, Mr. Padilla, is that when we come back with the consolidation, which will be back in the next two to three weeks, that the presentation we provide, again, to address some of your issues, to be able to outline specifics, because this was not the consolidation today. They didn't come with all of the materials that we have prepared to respond and to address the issue of oversight. We will have that before us. But we need to increase the, the presentation. But I'll ask you, John, you were head of General Services before you became Wreckin' Parks-
Correct.
And you're, you've now seen both sides of it. And I've asked you this question honestly several times. Do you believe that the consolidation will actually improve with the existing resources we have?
There's no, there's no question there will be improvement. You, we alluded to what happened in London. Well, we had something similar September 11th, when we had to immediately marshal all our resources to start doing public building safety and security. We had to bring in all these various agencies, and it was very difficult. We didn't speak the same language, we didn't have the same training, we didn't have the same radio frequencies. What this will do is we'll consolidate this security function in one agency for better response, better training. There's no doubt in my mind, both formerly as the General Manager, General Service, and now as Wreckin' Parks, for our urban parks, we will have better security. We have a more visible security presence. I still have that concern for our regional parks, our large regional parks, and I've been working with Mr. Fujioka, and we have agreed, because this is going to evolve over time, to relook this consistently, continuously, to improve it with the community members, who, I have to admit, probably are out there more often than most of us, and know really what the issues are. So we need to work with the community members, the neighborhood councils, our own expertise, but yes, the answer is, for our urban parks, I believe we will have a better presence, a more visible presence on a consistent basis.
And Eric, just one quick question. Is there more crime that occurs in the urban parks or the regional parks?
We're seeing more in our urban parks, but it's creeping into our regional parks. As we're putting pressure through this technology and better policing in our parks, they're going somewhere.
going somewhere. But there's a different crime also in our regional parks, on a daily basis, that happens. So we're seeing an increase now in our urban, in our large parks.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President, only because I didn't get a chance to finish, and I ran out of time, but there's two critical questions. One for me is that, as I look at our city formulas, we have a tendency, as a city, in each department, to look at things from a geographic perspective. We say that particular area, or that target area, has so many square miles, and therefore, you need to put more resources there. When you look at a smaller district, you see, geographic gets smaller, therefore, it gets less. What ends up happening, though, is that in the smaller areas, like in the districts of the east side and south side, you have forty thousand people per square mile, when in other pockets of the city, you have maybe four thousand per square mile. It doesn't mean crime is any less dangerous anywhere in the city, but that tends to penalize the urban park systems within the inner city, who have these tremendous pressures because these very high densities. Forty thousand people per square mile around Lincoln Park, Lincoln Heights is true, Cypress Park, MacArthur Park, we'd be able to bring down fifty percent crime because of the cameras, strategic policing, a focus from Chief Braden, and the brass from LAPD, and coordination with Rec and Parks. Those are models we should be exploring, and how we bring down those pressures and bring down that crime. I would hate to see, as a result of this consolidation, that we continue to have this tale of two cities, we have such stark contrasts in how the parks are being kept up, how they're being policed, and we keep pushing people into tighter, tighter spaces, because we don't have enough room for more park in the urban center. So my plea to you is, if we go down this consolidation, I would like to see in your report, the crime statistics in these parks, and then talk about how this consolidation might make a difference, given the new strategies we'll put in place, and how we communicate, how we allocate resources, to allow, at least those of us who represent these areas, to connect with the leadership in that park, and talk about how they could have some hope. Because right now, quite frankly, there's a level of resignation that says, we're not getting any help, it's not going to come, and therefore, we have to tolerate what we have to tolerate, and I don't think that should be the attitude of our communities, given that they are being assaulted every day.
Let me, if I may, just make a comment on this, because one of the beauties of being somebody not traditionally a Rec and Parks professional, is that I can look at non-traditional ways of addressing problems. What Councilman Reyes said is correct, not one size fits all. Councilman Reyes's district is one of the highest density areas in whole United States, barring none. What I was able to do, working with other nonprofits and other agencies, is get the demographics and the breakdown. You probably have the largest percentage of youths under the age of eighteen. You probably have the lowest rate of income in the city. So what we are trying to do is address those issues at the various parks, including Lafayette Park, by bringing in the expertise, bringing in the hope that we so desperately need. One area is public safety, we realize that. That's only one of many things we have to do in our parks. So I will work with your district, as I have been, look at more creative ways to provide interest. We know we have an unemployment rate that's just skyrocketing in our youth. More job opportunities, more training, et cetera, et cetera. So I've heard you individually, I've met with members of your community at large, and we realize we need to do more. So my thing is, please, get the word out, I'm here to bring hope to all the communities and work hard. This is one aspect of it. We need a safe park, we need a clean park, we need a well-resourced park, and then we need to address all the, what the citizens themselves want us to provide. And that's why I'm coming here, I'll be a broken record, I'll be here, I'll be a pain to you, but my goal here is to make L.A. City Recreation Parks the national leader that it once was.
Are the members wishing to speak at this time? If not, let's proceed with the vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Colleagues, let's now proceed to item twenty-five.
And that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl, and just to let council know that an additional community impact statement has been submitted by the Glissell Park Neighborhood Council, and copies have been distributed to the council members.
Okay, and a public hearing has been held in committee on this item. An additional public hearing was held on Friday here in council on this item. Matter was continued to today for consideration. Members of the council wishing to speak now on item twenty-five. Members of the council wishing to speak, Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, again, and thank you, colleagues, for continuing this, to be able to have the vote here on Tuesday, and appreciate Ms. Perry's second on that, and Mr. Rosendahl's words on Friday, too. Thank you so much for those very moving words. I was asked by a reporter earlier, you know, what about those who say about same-sex civil marriage, that this opens the gate, and we've certainly heard opponents of this talk about people having sex with animals, and goats, and things like that, that was the question that was asked of me. And I said, you know, there was a time in which people compared African-Americans to monkeys, and said that whites and blacks couldn't marry, that there was a time when women were not supposed to vote. In fact, we have Tuesday as our voting day, because that was Women's Wash Day, so men could go vote while women did the wash. This is one more step towards saying that all people in this city should be treated equally. And the second question, which was asked of me this morning, was why indeed should we be voting on this here in the city council? And I appreciate everybody who came for and against this issue down here, because I said, at Sacramento, they're not afforded that same right, to be able to come here and actually petition their government directly, to say, this is, we have no invitation, we're coming here because we are participants in this democracy, and we want to be represented, we want our voice to be heard. It's a very simple thing, it's the basis of democracy itself. But as we look at that basis of participation, and the second basis, which is protection of all people's rights, that promise that America was founded on, and as we take bold steps forward in racial and gender relations, and now along sexual orientation lines, we fulfill the promise of America. And Mr. Rosendahl spoke very well about, that this is about civil marriage. Some of us feel very deeply and very spiritual about this, but that's not what this is the vote for today. This is about making sure that government is neutral, that does not discriminate against any class of people, no matter how God created them, no matter who they are. So I urge your eye vote on this today, it will send a clarion call in Sacramento, and from Sacramento, hopefully, one that will resound throughout the United States. There is so much work to do, but if you look back on the progress five years ago, you wouldn't have had people saying that a conservative position was, I support civil unions. That in itself is progress. And as we take one of the great moral questions of our time, this is the civil rights issue of our time right now, we can all say, looking back a generation from now, when we have children who are raised without any discrimination, without any prejudice, we can say that we are there, and we are part of that history. I urge your eye vote.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Often when we discuss issues of this magnitude, for me, it turns on my own personal experiences, and I reflect back on my swearing-in, and one of the people that I highlighted in my comments was a woman who has worked for me, and is a grandmother to five children, who she's caring for, as she battles breast cancer, and she's openly gay, and I worry about her each and every day. She's a city employee, I worry about her, I worry about her partner, and what might happen if she is able to, unable to care for her children, and whose rights will be protected. And I'm also worried about my own godson, who is growing up in a family with two fathers, in a family of model of love and caring, and a relationship between two individuals, who I believe should be granted the same rights and benefits and responsibilities and respect as you would give any couple in a committed relationship. And so, as Mr. Garcetti pointed out, I'm not here to debate the ecclesiastical origins of marriage, and the morality, and how marriage is interpreted. I am here to make sure that the rights of children, whether their parents are heterosexual or homosexual, and that institution is protected, so these individuals continue to have the same rights as anyone else who has chosen to live in a committed relationship. And I would like to say thank you to Mr. Garcetti for moving this forward, and I would join him in asking for an eye vote.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Mr. President, the right of women to vote wasn't always granted in the country. One time, women couldn't vote. At one time, minorities would have to ride in the back of the bus. There were separate restrooms, separate drinking fountains. The civil rights, the struggle for minorities and civil rights, the issue of benefits, we now have domestic partners. They can receive benefits, they can receive the assurance that their relationship has some protections. And speaking with my colleague, Bill Rosendahl, this morning, and Eric Garcetti, the focus to me is what is fair to people? What is fair to human beings? Is it fair that women couldn't vote? Is it fair that minorities had to sit in the back of the bus, and they couldn't drink out of certain drinking fountains, or go to certain locations? In a country where we talk about people being united, the United States of America, where everyone has liberty and justice and freedom for all, and while there are some religious people who will criticize, and they'll say there's a moral issue here, what I look at is the reality of today, where we have domestic partners. We have domestic partners that work for the city, we have domestic partners that are recognized throughout the state of California and other parts of this country. So I don't see a big conflict, to be honest with you. I don't see a huge conflict by extending this, and Mr. Rosendahl explained to me, when someone's dying in the hospital, certain people can come visit, and certain people can't. Certain people have those rights for their loved one, and others don't have that. And what this tells me is that we live up to what we say, that everyone has the rights, everyone has the benefits, regardless of their gender, regardless of the love relationship that they have. That is what it's about, to me. And I am going to, I wasn't here on Friday, I was at a conference, and I didn't want to miss this today, so I am going to support my colleagues. I don't know how many are voting, supporting it, but I know that in my heart, in my conscience, it's the right thing to do, and send the right message. And I know Sacramento, I heard on the radio this morning, they're going back and forth between the Senate and the legislature, trying to resolve what they're going to do. But I think for the people of Los Angeles, where I've written in the West Hollywood Parade, and the people say, we appreciate you being here, we appreciate your recognition. And when you want to look at a city that doesn't have a problem with funding, a city that is thriving, go to West Hollywood. They don't have a funding problem, because they have good, honest citizens who support the Constitution and support each other, and they live in peace and harmony. So Bill, I know you asked me to support this, Eric, wherever Eric went, I'm going to support this, not because you influenced me, but what you did is confirm what I believed in my heart, that it's the right vote, it's the right message to send to our elected officials in Sacramento, and the people of Los Angeles and the people around, that we finally come to the point where all people are treated and created equal. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Colleagues, I also rise to support, this is very important legislation, this is a message that I think will permeate at many levels. You know, in the immigrant community, folks who come to this country, they work a hard job, they pay their taxes, and a good number of them are treated as if they are invisible. In many ways, I see parallels here, in that you have folks who deserve their benefits, they've been paying into the coffers, into government for all of their life, and now they're being denied those benefits. So the issue of marriage rights for same-sex couples, for me, is a no-brainer, because of the contribution to this economy, to this country. But just as important is the message we're sending to many of the folks who come from throughout the world to Los Angeles, who come with really strong macho attitudes in how you treat individuals. And there's a lot of pain involved, because it's not only the males and the females, but it's the children who are hurt by this. And all I'm saying is that, if you have love in a couple, and they're willing to give of their life for their children, why not allow them the benefits to continue as they go through their golden years, and take advantage of the benefits they deserve? So we're sending a message that hits many different levels of concern, it is a civil rights issue, and I stand and rise to support my colleagues. Thank you.
Mr. Labonte?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Zine, you don't need to go to West Hollywood, you go to Silver Lake, go to other neighborhoods throughout Los Angeles. This is a very dynamic area, no offense to West Hollywood, 1.6 square miles, thirty-four thousand people. But Los Angeles has always been a welcoming place, and it will continue to be a welcoming place. And California will be, continue to be a welcoming place, if this evolution takes place of how people are looked at, and how it's all about love, it truly is all about love, and having respect for one another, whatever your sexuality is. And I would just hope that the state legislature could find that as something they would support. Because I stand to support people who I represent, people who I know, and people who care about other people, that it's important to see that this right be granted for marriage for those who choose that they would like to be married. That's all I will say. Good afternoon. I was going to say this, Bill, I was going to say, I don't know why you want to get married, I've been married eighteen years, you want to go ahead and get married, go ahead, but it's crazy. I'm just teasing. I'm just teasing. Do it. Strong words. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss?
You left me speechless, Mr. Labonte, I didn't, it's an interesting act to follow. I, you know, everything, everything that, everything that needs to be said has been said, I just want to say that I am, I want to associate myself with almost everything that was said, and, and say I'm proud to stand here with my colleagues and cast this vote today. I'll make two brief points that I don't think have been said explicitly. One is, many people have asked, why is the Los Angeles City Council taking this action? Why is this matter here, in a sense? The answer is as follows, this is a matter of state law, it is being debated by state lawmakers in Sacramento. We represent the largest city in the state of California, we want lawmakers in Sacramento to know the official position of this city. It's very important that we do that, that explains why it is indeed very germane and very appropriate that we, as a body, take this affirmative position today. That's why we're doing it. The second point, I'll try to be brief on it, there's been so much discussion over the past years about marriage for same-sex couples, or civil unions, what are the differences, what is it all about? And let's face it, folks, when you, when it comes right down to it, all marriages are civil unions, right? All marriages are civil unions that are acknowledged by the state, that are given a bundle of legal rights and privileges by the state through laws. That's all marriage is in the United States. Marriage has religious connotations to certain people when they choose to have a religious ceremony, when they choose to imbue their marriage with religion. There are plenty of people who believe differently from all of us, and not all of us in this room believe in the same God anyway, and there's some people who don't choose to imbue their marriage with religious connotations at all, and that's fine as well. But in terms of the state's relationship to the concept of marriage, it is really just that, of civil union. It is really just a decision by those who make laws to grant certain legal rights and privileges to certain individuals. And all we are saying today is, that the decision by a state to grant those bundles of legal rights and privileges should not be made in a discriminatory fashion. That is all we're doing today, that is why it actually is, from a legal standpoint, in my view, ultimately so simple and so fundamental.
Ms. Grue?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be brief, because my colleagues have all been so articulate today, it's hard to follow in their footsteps. But today's vote is about equal rights, it's about anti-discrimination, and it's about representing our city and our community. And so, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for your leadership. I was going to call the question, but I understand you're going to be our last speaker, so just very proud of this body today.
Mr. Rosenthal. To close.
Needless to say, I'm very proud of my colleagues, my brothers and sisters around this table today, for your clarity and your articulation on a very important civil rights Sunday, I was invited by the mayor of San Francisco to see a movie that was a documentary called "The Pursuit of Equality." And the auditorium at the Directors Guild was packed, and there was a lot of weeping going on in the room. You know, all gays and lesbians want are the same basic civil rights that heterosexuals take for granted. You know, in the opening chapters of the Book of Genesis, Jewish tradition holds that all human beings are created in the image of God. And that assumption provides the foundation for liberal Jewish views that state and federal laws regarding marriage in this country should apply equally to all couples choosing to have a legal marriage. Civil marriage must be differentiated from religious marriage, because religious marriage is an institution and a religious concept that must remain the domain of religion. But civil marriage is a set of legal protections and benefits that the government grants based on the possession of civil marriage licenses. I did have a discussion with my colleague, Councilman Zein, and in that discussion, I pointed out very clearly that homosexuals are denied basic civil rights, and we should not cloud it with religion. This is my Bible. I've had it for 35 years, and as I said last Friday, there are tears in this Bible from me as I was struggling through my sexuality. I'm one of eight children, four brothers and three sisters, same parents, same love. None of this difference about father this or mother that, just that my brother Peter, a year older than me, was a heterosexual and his younger brother Billy was a gay guy. Well, as I struggled through it, I looked up a couple of passages, and when I looked in Matthew, in Matthew, you know, he talks about, if you want to, this is chapter seven, "If you want to avoid judgment, stop passing judgment. Your verdict and others will be the verdict passed on to you." And then if I went a little further and I looked at Luke, I also found that he said, "Be compassionate, as your father is compassionate. Do not judge, and you will not be judged." And I say that to my brothers and sisters in organized religion that try to make a religious connotation of it. I happen to believe in God, and I think God created all of nature as an expression. We don't choose our orientation. It is not a choice, and it is not a moral issue, but we either accept ourselves or suffer our life in a sense of desperation. When I came to the conclusion that God created nature, and I was just another expression of God's will, then I realized that God makes no mistake. In about less than a half an hour, the state senate is going to be acting on this issue. And I am most gratified that my colleagues around the city council are sending a strong message to Sacramento that we in the great city of Los Angeles hold no civil discrimination against anyone. And God bless you, my brothers and sisters on the city council. Thank you very much.[826.62][826.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, could we forthwith this so that the mayor could sign it immediately and we can send a message to Sacramento that the great city of Los Angeles respects homosexuals' basic civil rights?
Absolutely. Let's send this item forthwith, please. Next item?
Next item, Mr. President, number 26 was called special by Councilmember Zein.
To be considered concurrently with item 27. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can have the folks come forward on the 77th facility, please. You couldn't have been better, baby. I'm afraid. Thanks. My pleasure. I told you I was there for you. Good evening, almost. The Public Safety Committee, we heard about the 77th facility and some of the follow-up issues and concerns that came about with the escape of an individual and the resulting publicity and concern for the community's safety. The holding cells, I understand that the 77th, they've been fixed, we no longer have drywall and mesh, and we've inspected throughout the city. All holding cells are adequate to incarcerate temporarily until folks are housed inside of a jail?
That is correct.
Can you identify, for the record, the three?
Yvette Sanchez-Owens, Commanding Officer, LAPD Facilities Management Division.
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay. And today's standard, if we were to build a new police station, which I know there's plans to build a couple more stations, and we're going to build holding cells, holding facility, is the standard different today than it was when 77th was established with the drywall and mesh?
Yes, according to the State Board of Corrections, there is no standard for holding cells. There wasn't then, and there isn't now. However, LAPD insists that we build all of our holding cells and jail cells with either cinder block or cement walls.
Okay, because people that are placed in holding cells are there temporarily, but the people who are arrested, placed there, could be anywhere from a murderer to a traffic violator?
That is correct.
Okay. The issue that came up about taking the comprehensive review of 77th Regional Facility and the cost involved, after we started thinking, "Why can't we do that with existing personnel? Why do we have to spend $100,000 on an outside contractor versus utilizing the city resources to take that facility top to bottom and determine what needs to be corrected and how we find the funds to correct it?"
Gary Moore, City Engineer. Our proposal is to go out and to look at 11 different areas for this facility. Some of the areas, we will partner with and use city staff, but some of the areas, we don't have the expertise. We contract out elevator inspections, for instance, the fire life safety systems, those are items that we need to have somebody from the outside come in and to assist us.
Okay. The issue with the Prop Q versus Prop 2, and the standards from Prop Q to Prop 2, have the standards changed from those two bond measures?
Most definitely. When I took this job back in 1998, 77th had been in existence for only a couple of years, but already I was hearing significant complaints. So what I did was I commissioned a study to go back and talk to occupants of those facilities and find out what worked, what doesn't work, so that we didn't repeat history with new bonds that we were pursuing. And what we learned was that we really needed to talk to some of the service agencies that work with us to maintain our buildings, being ITA and General Services. We got a lot of input from them, as well as working with Bureau of Engineering, and we developed a whole book of standards that we now implement in all of our new facilities.
I know that the West Valley facilities received rave reviews, they haven't had problems there. The Mission Facility, I haven't heard any complaints about that either, but the other facilities, Rosco and Canoga and Mid-Wilshire, those facilities will be built to a standard where we won't have a situation like 77th, I hope?
That is correct. The standards for the new police stations, as Yvette has alluded to, is very much of an organized, thoughtful process that we've carried through to all of the new police stations.
And I don't want to harp on what's happened in the past, but to progress forward so we don't continue that same kind of a problem. When it comes to the funding for the study that needs to be done, and then the allocation to bring 77th up, for example, we heard in Public Safety Committee, the air conditioning's not working. That oftentimes, they have other problems with the facility. Is the CAO identified funding for that at this time, for the study?
In discussions with Bill Fugio, our CAO, he's found the $100,000 fund necessary for the, for the study. As far as any fixes, we'll have to wait to see what necessary fixes are and how much capital resources we'd need to fix those.
And we are not permitted to use current or future bond money, other than what it's earmarked for at that particular time? Because I know there's bond money for current projects. Could that money be utilized for this, or does it have to be new bond money or newfound money?
I'd have to get with the CAO to give you a direct answer to that. I'm not quite sure on, you know, what would need to be fixed and the exact, if we'd be able to use Prop 2 or Prop Q. We'd have to work with the CAO, possibly even the city attorney, to determine which funding source.
Okay, and while we signed off on that facility almost eight years ago, is there any good faith that we can receive from the contractor or any of the subs to help with some of the modifications that have to take place?
In general, on our new facilities, you have a one-year warranty period. Some of the longer-life systems, like roofing and so forth, does have an extended warranty period. As we go through this analysis here, we'll definitely look for any opportunities that if, if something happened in the past with the contractor or the consultant, we'll definitely look at those options.
Because I'd like to, as soon as we can, get it up to running as a standard for that community and the officers, as well as those builders, those subs that are currently working on city projects, maybe out of some clear conscience, they could say, "We could do this, we could do that," which would expedite the matter. Since we don't have, I think Yvette told me, somewhere $25 million would be to tear it down and start all over. I know we don't have that kind of funding. I'd like to have this back in Public Safety in a reasonable period of time. I know if we let go of it, it's going to wander away, and we want to maintain control over it so we can finally put this to rest.
You definitely have, we're working very closely with the Department of General Services. They've been terrific to work with in preparing the scope of work here, along with the Police Department, and we'll be back in a very timely manner on this issue.
And I just want to comment on General Services. General Services has taken a lot of heat on this. You don't build the facilities, what you do is maintain them. And when they're not built properly and there's problems that occur, and you come in and patch them to try and keep it in operation. So no criticism to General Services. This wasn't a General Services project. This was something that you continually, David, tried to patch up over the period of time I've been here. And we keep on patching. So I appreciate what you folks have done, the folks at 77 do. I spend a lot of time down in that part of the city, and when I show up, they clearly show there's continuing problems. Madam President, when I leave in the next few minutes, is that going to break quorum? Oh, Mr. Smith just came back? Okay, great. Anyway.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you all for being here and stay up on it, and we'll bring it back to Public Safety to maintain we can get that thing back in operating condition. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. So that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Our next item is item number seven, and I know both Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On item seven, I just had a conversation with Mr. Cardenas, and he had to leave, so we'd like to move that to tomorrow.
Okay, it will be continued till tomorrow. Thank you very much. There's no objection to that. Our next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item was item number 15, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask staff from Housing to come up. Colleagues, this is an issue that affects all of us. It's a motion that I presented and asked for presentation at the Housing Economic Development Committee. All of us have either Section 8 or, in most instances, Housing Authority-owned property, and it's an issue in which the federal government is moving forward to remove a great portion or percentage of funds that we may have been relying on in the past. And we'd just like to have you make a quick presentation regarding that.
Yes, Councilmember. Madam President, Councilmembers Rudolph Montiel with the Housing Authority, and specifically, this refers to the negotiated rulemaking process that took place last year for HUD to determine the proper funding levels for public housing in this country. Unfortunately, the administration has taken a position that they want to present a funding formula that is different from what took place with the negotiated rulemaking process, where the industry and the administration actually negotiated the funding formula. And the issue becomes one where if this proposed formula is actually implemented, it could result in up to a 42% loss in public housing funding from the federal government. That is a tremendous funding amount and could result in some very adverse impact to our public housing stock in this city, specifically having to shutter units and lay off employees and, of course, not be able to provide public housing for the residents that so need this, need this service. So what we are asking, and Councilmember Parks has brought forth to you, is support for a resolution that will call for the administration to return to the negotiated rulemaking process and have the funding implemented at that level. Although we will lose some money through the negotiated rulemaking process, the loss is less than what the administration is currently proposing. And if we move to asset-based, asset management, which HUD wants us to do from a public housing perspective, this would also stop the loss at only 8%. So from that standpoint, I think that it's very important that, that we tell the federal government that Los Angeles needs to have more federal dollars, and that as a net exporter of federal dollars, we need our fair share here in this city.
One thing in your presentation, primarily this impacts the housing stock that we own, but does it impact Section 8 also?
It definitely impacts the public housing stock that we own, but it also, because of the lost funding to the Housing Authority, would impact all our operations, which is Section 8, which is a citywide issue.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that we had that presentation, because if I'm not mistaken, almost every one of our districts has a Section 8 program, and almost everyone has housing owned or operated by the Housing Authority. And so it's going to affect the citywide approach, and so even beyond what we're doing today, our contacts with the congressional officials that represent us, it'd be important to see if we can't change this process around. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. We have on the speaker queue, Councilmember Hahn, followed by Councilmember Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for this presentation, Councilmember Parks. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. This is devastating. I mean, the potential for this is absolutely devastating. I already think that we operate on a shoestring budget, particularly for our public housing projects, and 42% cut in our funding would basically, you know, that would really wipe us out. So, Claire, are we going to, are we going to bring forth a resolution? Is someone working on that to, are you bringing forth a resolution that will?
That's what we, yeah. Basically, our resolution today says that we should-
Oh, is that what we're doing today? Okay.
Support the change in the negotiation.
A change in the funding.
But I think it also would help individuals that have a relationship-
I was going to say, I think we also need individually send communication to our congressional member, our LA delegation, and I would make sure that we do that as well. One more example of federal government turning its back on, you know, its programs. This is another example of how they really have abandoned people who are dependent on public housing in this country. They really need to take a look at it and see what damage they would do by this. This is, this is really, could be a huge crisis. So thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Could that be like a, is that like a sort of a friendly amendment to our resolution that we also have a communication with all the LA delegation for congressional members?
Thank you, I assume that's a friendly amendment. Mr. Rosenthal?
Madam President, thank you for letting me speak. And once again, my colleague, Mr. Parks, is enlightening me and bringing things to attention for all of us, and I appreciate that. I'm outraged by this. I mean, here we are, the second-largest city in the nation, the megalopolis of the entire planet, and housing is one of our biggest issues. We don't have enough affordable housing, we don't have enough housing for anybody. When Mayor Hahn put together his trust fund, the strategy was to get funds going so we could get more housing going. For the federal government to cut back, maybe 8% or 42%, whatever it ends up being, where are they? I mean, what world are they living in? Los Angeles is becoming a city of a divide, the super-rich and then the rest of us. And the divide is getting bigger every day. And one of the ways to close that divide is affordable housing, Section 8 housing, and other forms of public housing. I want to send a strong message to- And the divide is getting bigger every day, and one of the ways to close that divide is affordable housing, Section 8 housing, and other forms of public housing. I want to send a strong message to our Washington delegation that we must not tolerate this kind of indifference, and I basically think irresponsibility, on the federal government's part in dealing with our housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. The item is before us, with the friendly amendments by Ms. Hahn. Madam Clerk, call the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item has been approved. Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other items on the desk for us today?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those should be moved and referred?
Council has excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Tuesday, July 19th, to leave at 12:15, and Tuesday, July 26th, to leave at 12:15. A motion is required on both those.
Motion by Councilmember Labonge, and followed by, seconded by Councilmember Hahn.
Councilmember Gercetti requests to be excused Friday, August 5th, for personal business, and August 17th and 19th for city business. A motion is required on those.
Moved by Councilmember Zine and seconded by Councilmember Rosendahl.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused July 13th, to arrive at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Moved by Councilmember Perry and seconded by Councilmember Smith.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have announcements.
Just have item 15 forthwith.
Item 15, we'll go forthwith. Any announcements today, colleagues? Mr. Labonge.
Just a beautiful chimpanzee lived 51 years in our Los Angeles Zoo past, Toto past. He originally was an actor in Hollywood, came to Los Angeles Zoo in 1961, and then he transferred from the old Los Angeles Zoo in Park Central out to the new Los Angeles Zoo, believe it or not, 60, almost 40 years ago, and lived to the ripe old age of 51. So I wanted to announce that. That's not an adjourning resolution. We're just going to salute Toto for his great joy brought to the children of Los Angeles for so many years.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Weiss?
I thought you were going to tell us about high school he went to. But we will have the meeting of the ITGS Committee directly after council. Mr. Parks, Mr. Gercetti, we'll just go right up there.
Thank you. Announce it, Mr. Parks.
Yes, I have a couple announcements. One, I was joined by Jan Perry this morning at a news conference where we had one of the first smart sidewalks put in, installed at 59th and Normandy, and we allow Ms. Perry to go through first, and it does work.
How nice of you, Mr. Parks.
And also, tomorrow, Wednesday, July 13th, 10:00 a.m., the 68th Street Elementary School addition will have a ribbon cutting at 612 West 68th Street, LA 90044. And then also, a free homebuyer fair will be held at the Epic Center at 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Menlo and King Boulevard, and that's on Saturday, July 16th.
Thank you. Any other announcements this morning?
I just have one question for Councilman Parks. Did you say smart sidewalk?
No.
No, crosswalk.
Oh, smart crosswalk? Okay. I thought you said sidewalk.
I know you were listening.
I was listening.
That's why I said it right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have adjourning motions today? I know I actually have one here from the chair. So if we could ask everyone to please stand. Colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory today of Charles Blissin. He was born on September 9th, 1915, and passed away July 8th, 2005. He was 89 years old. Since 1990, Charles Blissin volunteered his time to the community by strengthening and revitalizing the minds and spirits of senior citizens. He retired at the age of 75, and since his retirement, he conducted exercise classes and organized senior group trips. His classes were designed to strengthen the bodies of seniors, which ultimately helped promote independent mobilization. He understood that a great society is measured by how it takes care of its most vulnerable. By offering his exercise classes and day trips free of charge, he provided invaluable activities to anyone in need, regardless of privilege. His time and contributions were given out of desire to make someone else's life better and in return, make his own life better. The gift of joy through exercise and social activity was Mr. Blissin's philosophy. We will miss Charles Blissin in our CD2 office. He was a frequent visitor. We saw him just a few months ago at the retirement of one of our staff members, and he was as vital and alive as any almost 90-year-old can be, and we appreciated his commitment to our community. He is survived by his wife, Bernice Blissin, his children, Bob, Jill, and Rochelle, and his grandchildren, Amy and Barry. May we adjourn in his memory today. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of the toddler just recently killed in a tragic incident at 104th and Avalon on July 10th, unfortunately, as part of a police activity. And we certainly would like to send a message to the family, that our hearts go out to them, and that certainly the cities in the journey will show our sympathy for that family.
Thank you. All members on that, thank you very much. No other adjourning motions. Madam Clerk?
Okay.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.